I'm not driving. I just got.
Aren't you navigating, though?
Nope.
I think we're live.
GPS.
You're on the air. You're on the air.
Sorry.
Coach Stacy.
Good evening and welcome to the August 3rd School Committee meeting. I am, it is 7:00. We're calling this meeting to order pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's Emergency Order dated March 16th, 2020. The Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Action Requirement of keeping the public informed of action during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending, please state your name for identification purposes when you speak. At this time, a roll call attendance will happen. And bear with me one moment because none of you are on the screen. Mrs. Lestevnik?
Here.
Ms. Handstad?
Here.
Mr. Morton?
Present.
Ms. Naborsky?
Present.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
And Dr. Savard?
Here.
Okay. At this time, I will accept a motion to approve remote participation for this meeting.
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Cynthia.
Moved by Dawn. Cynthia. Roll call vote. Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Handstad?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes. Okay. Good evening, everybody. So this evening, we are here for one purpose and one purpose only. That is to hear the proposal being put forth by our administration team on the reopening plans for school. School Committee, I'm just going to ask that tonight we focus on listening to the presentation. I know you had a chance to review it maybe or maybe not last evening when it was shared out with us. It's 54, 48 pages, so there's a lot to take in. The goal for this evening's meeting is strictly to listen. If you have clarifying questions, I ask that you use the chat feature on Zoom, and Keith will ask your clarifying question. But we really want the administrators to be able to get through the proposal. For the community, we ask, many of you like to ask questions on Facebook and on the HCAT live broadcast. Please don't ask your questions there because nobody from the School Committee or Administration is on that right now, and they're not paying attention to those questions. So if you have questions, Dr. Cusco will be sending out an email where you will have an opportunity to put your questions, you'll be able to pose your question to her that will then be disseminated to the community, to the School Committee and the administrators. If you have further questions, any one of the School Committee members is happy to take your question, and we are keeping a doc that we all have access to. So please feel free to email one School Committee member, you don't need to email us all, with your questions. You'll have tomorrow and Wednesday as parents and community to read through the documentation, and then we will have questions on Wednesday evening. On Thursday evening, the School Committee is going to reconvene. We're going to discuss and answer questions, and we're going to have a robust conversation. So with that being said, I am turning this over to Dr. Cusco and her team, and I just ask that everybody, if you're not speaking, please put yourselves on mute.
Thank you, Stacy. And as you said, we're here tonight just to talk about a rough draft proposal that we are trying to get out to the community tonight because it is due tentatively to DSE on August 10th. So we really wanted to have this week to have some more conversations, some more questions answered, which may help us tweak and make some edits to the draft, which would then go to DSE. But I also want to remind people that this draft is going to be, even once it is submitted at some point to DSE, we will likely continue to make changes because there are a lot of things that are unknown at this time that are going to drive some of the decisions. And there may be a time when we come back and potentially ask you to look at the proposal again in a different way, depending on what the events that happen over the next few weeks. So tonight's discussion is really going to be a snapshot in time, what we know right now about the virus, what we know about what's happening in Massachusetts. And with that, I'm going to share my screen so that we can start our presentation. So if you can give me a minute for that. Okay. Can everybody see that? That's on the School Committee right now? All right. So just to get started, we had a rigorous timeline to try to get some information out to the community and our staff and really try to vet this process because this is just the, I feel like this is the beginning of this conversation and surely not the end. We have some time left over the summer to really vet some of the things that are going to come up tonight, and I encourage you to have those questions in the next few days. So one of the things that we really wanted to make sure is that we really have to consider what's feasible for safety and well-being of staff and students, and that's what drove a lot of the proposals that we're just putting forth in this draft plan tonight. And when we have the lens of just thinking about why we're thinking about different models for HPS for the fall, these are such unprecedented times and so many things to consider. But as an administrative team, and I hope as a district, that we really have to think about equality versus equity in these discussions. This visual is really telling because equality is to do, if we were going to be doing something that is related to just equality right now, that means every child pre-K to 12 would have the same instruction for the fall. And if you look at the pictures in front of us, not every child at every developmental stage, not every child with disabilities, not every child in general ed, pre-K to 12, learns the same way or has the same needs. So equity truly involves the distribution based on the needs of the recipients. And that's why you'll see the model we proposed tonight is really about what's feasible for all learners, trying to prioritize the needs of all learners in a meaningful way, and really about equity versus equality solely. I'm going to hand that over to Peter for a minute to talk about the vision and principles.
Throughout our process, we were guided by some goals and principles that really, you know, formulated our work. First of all, we were aiming to develop an educationally sound plan that would provide the greatest opportunities for student learning in this very unique and unprecedented time. We also were, you know, focused very strongly on nurturing the physical and social and emotional well-being of students and staff. And that relates to our kind of, our guiding, you know, most important principle. Yes, we are an educational institution, but safety and health always, and especially now, are paramount. And that was the thing that we looked at most as we were contemplating any situations and scenarios during this time of pandemic. We also, it's been a challenging several months and obviously challenging times starting in March. But as a group, you know, as a staff, we embraced the challenge best we could and wanted to model innovative thinking. That meant really discussing all different scenarios and possibilities and being open to thinking outside of the box in this really unique time. We also worked hard to create a plan that was flexible and nimble that would allow us to continuously assess and adjust based upon health and safety considerations, but also based upon our assessment of how individual kids and groups of kids were doing and what we could do in order to improve that, as well as how our staff was doing in delivering this model. That gets to this next part. We were certainly ambitious, and we really wanted to realize these really important goals and make sure we maximize this year despite the challenges. But we also tried to be as realistic as possible, and we look forward to feedback with regard to that as well. We also focused, as we did in the spring, on a warm and welcoming environment that prioritizes connection. So knowing that educational learning does not happen without those connections and without focusing on these important areas of culture. We also wanted to make sure that we didn't lose sight of our core priorities, regardless of the year, about innovative and teaching and learning. We're really trying to develop these skills that will, and deep understandings that will serve kids throughout life and throughout their educational careers. The social emotional well-being of students and staff continue to be core to this plan as it is each year, and also the idea of teaching all students. And how do we reach all students and support them differently and challenge them as necessary in these difficult times? Another area related to teaching all students is the idea of equity and social justice. We wanted to magnify these important principles and look at, as Dr. Cusco mentioned, how we can serve kids differently based upon their needs and how we can also analyze our accomplishments through an eye of equity, as well as embrace the conversations and the reflections that we have with regard to social justice in society, but also in our schools. And the final principle was around communication and working to communicate to the community in a way that was, that where we welcome feedback, and that's what we're really looking forward to. We're very proud of what we produce, and we look forward to the feedback that we get because we know this is just kind of the beginning of that part of the journey. Now, when we think about kind of our process, it's been, it's been a, it's been an arduous, you know, last few months as we kind of stepped out of our kind of remote learning minds and jumped into the reopening planning process that began back in June when district administrators began to meet bi-weekly, discuss these issues, and to discuss what the process might look like. We also went back in June, developed building-based groups with a great turnout from staff with 25 to 35 members from all different departments, all different roles throughout the schools. So it's 25 to 35 members per school, and we also had 15 students at the high school who joined in those weekly conversations. On June 25th, we finally received the initial guidance from the state. It was, it was, we were told it was going to be very, very prescriptive and kind of allow us, give us great guidance. It was much, much more open-ended, but it was still useful for us. We also have been receiving additional guidance throughout the month of July, and there'll be more guidance coming in August. And one important part of the guidance was actually something called the Parabola Project, which was actually partnered with the Mass Association of Superintendents. And it's a partnership between Ariadne Lab, which is a Joint Center for Health Systems Innovation at Brigham and Women's Hospital and at the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health. And that really kind of gave us greater information on how to proceed. Initially, that guidance on the 25th really was, and the commissioner were kind of pushing us towards a three-foot distancing model. But soon, with further guidance from medical professionals, including the Parabola Project, it became clear throughout the state that a six-foot distancing is something that we really should strive for and maintain. And though we spent several weeks at the beginning of July kind of doing feasibility studies around that three-foot distancing, we then pivoted to our plans with what was feasible with six-foot distancing and additional safety constraints. Starting in the middle of July, five district subcommittees were formed and during July began to meet related to the areas of teaching and learning in special education and specialized groups of student safety and student supports, facilities and operations, and personnel and staffing. And those groups were comprised of administrators from throughout the district, as well as a teacher representative and a parent representative. But we appreciate those groups greatly. We then, on July 28th last week, tried to synthesize all the information that we had from the tremendous work of the building-based groups that had been meeting throughout the time, as well as the district-based groups, as well as individual conversations we had as a district admin group, but also the hundreds and hundreds of conversations we had with our partners throughout the region. And so, starting on July 28th up to yesterday and even a bit today, we composed this first draft and proposal that we're presenting today. And today, again, we'll continue with these conversations and presenting it before the School Committee. We now look forward to, and Dr. Cusco will touch on this again at the end, our next steps of having forums with parents and staff that will include kind of these larger forums in the next couple of days, but also smaller opportunities to provide feedback throughout the next, the week and beyond. We also look forward to School Committee discussions, feedback and approval, meetings with the HFT to receive feedback and bargain impact, and also all the work that will follow with staff members in order to get into the nitty-gritty of how to implement the revised plan that we conclude with after this process.
Okay. So sorry about that. I'm muting myself. And we have been shared many, many videos and resources from DSE and almost too much to digest, honestly, in the short timeframe and that we've received these since June 25th and even closer to this time period. But there is one quick video that we did want to watch. It's almost three minutes, and I apologize for that. But I think it's, it helped inform where we are in our decision-making at this time. So I'm going to start that for you now. Is there supposed to be sound, Susan? Susan, we don't have any sound. Is there sound on this? Are you not hearing this at all?
No. Not at all.
Keith needs to unmute so that we can hear it. Keith, can you unmute? No, that's not doing it.
Not my presentation.
I think it has to be unmuted on the presentation. Maybe it needs to be unmuted on the presentation, Susan? Like on the YouTube taskbar or something? It should have like a click. If it's not working, I'll have to pass on it. Still not working? No. Okay. I'm sorry. We'll have to share that at another time. Apologize for that. Right at the bottom there where it says, yeah. I'm sorry. Was there something else? Nope. Never mind. Okay. Yeah. I'm not sure what happened there. Apologize. Say again.
Susan, maybe you can just give us like top line with the video, the key takeaway of the video?
Sure. And it really, I put the date on this of July 24th, and we'll post it to the website if we can as well. It's a short video really talking about the medical experts because none of, I believe nobody on this, in this group talking tonight with us, with the School Committee, is a medical doctor with a medical background. So I can't speak to that expertise. I'm an educational doctor. And July 24th, they released this video really telling us how important it is to consider the social emotional needs as well as the physical needs of students in Massachusetts as we plan our model. So I'm not going to get into that too much because there's a lot of research about that, and this is only one example of that. And if people would like to watch it, we'll link it up at another time. But for now, before we move on, I think I really just want to mention, in this whole process, I want us to start thinking about empathy and what, how we need to have empathy for our students, for our staff, for our administrators, for the community. This is such an unknown entity that we're dealing with. And I really want that to be the focus for whatever model we use to open up in the fall and for whatever considerations we have to make, that we try to have a lens of empathy, that we're all in this together. It does take a village to educate our students, and we need that village even more than ever today with the things that we're dealing with at this snapshot in time. So I just want to encourage people to try to have empathy for one another as we work through these difficult pieces of this puzzle moving forward. So the, part of the expectation, as Peter already had mentioned, was that there are, the Department of Education and the Commission of Education had indicated that we had to come up with three particular type, three parts to our plan, to plan for unknown entities that may come to us in the fall. We had to come up with an in-person learning model. And when we started to look at a three-foot model, certainly a three-foot model may have gotten most of our students back, but safely is the priority there. So we really didn't, more and more research coming out, safely was the key word. And that's why our district and almost all districts that I spoke with have moved to strictly a six-foot model for the planning purpose. Hybrid learning was part of that as well. We had to put together a model that would be a hybrid model. It's remote learning and in-person learning. And then if for some unforeseen reason that the virus spikes up and Massachusetts becomes a hotspot, then remote learning would be the only option at that time. All of our plans had to incorporate some of that. And I will say, just as recently as today, the Commission of Education reminded us again that remote learning is not the preferred model at the state level, and they have real concerns about us moving in that direction. And we're strongly encouraged to use an in-person learning model as much as possible. So some of the considerations I mentioned already, the six-foot distancing, we, not just as a district, but medical experts have all, including that Parabola report that Peter mentioned is a quite lengthy report, but six-foot distancing is referenced by all of those as the safest possibility for a return model. We certainly had to consider the feasibility of space, needs of students, how would we get them in safely at all levels? And the flexible continuum, Peter's always, already had alluded to that. We need to have a model that should things get more intense at the virus physically, what would we do to make the remote learning platform more rigorous if we had to move into that model immediately? But also, the opposite is true. In a perfect scenario, things get so much better in Massachusetts that we would hope that we could move to a less restrictive model. And that would mean the ability to potentially go to a three-foot planning model and hopefully get all of our students in person at that time. But it is something that could change in a moment's time, and the remote plan really needs to be rigorously examined and really planned for. And that's going to require a lot of input from teachers, from parents. This is not the end of a discussion. This is the beginning of a discussion. That remote planning piece in a hybrid model or in a remote model really needs to be vetted more carefully. And we have five and a half weeks before students would be returning. So we would have some time to do that, but that needs to happen continuously throughout the year as well. And the instruction model, again, at the state level, we're strongly encouraged for many reasons to have the in-person instruction based on what we know at this time for socialization, for academic growth. And it also has to have a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. Synchronous meaning what's happening in real time, if it's in person or online, that there would be a real person in front of students in some platform. And also, it could be through some interaction asynchronously, maybe after school at different times, but having some input from teachers, and even if they couldn't be face-to-face, a blended learning of asynchronous and synchronous learning. Peter?
Okay. I'm going to mute. Yeah. So we want to make clear that this reopening plan and draft may need to change over time. You know, if we had presented a plan two or three weeks ago, it would be dramatically different to what it is today. And we hope that we have greater insights into both the educational aspects, but especially the medical aspects, but we want to realize that that's good to happen. This also, this plan obviously relies on support from the Holliston School Committee, feedback from the community, which could obviously alter the plan, and we expect it will, negotiations with the Holliston Federation of Teachers, budgetary and staffing considerations that we are trying to predict but are still working on, more formal commitments from families and staff about their ability to return, especially to the in-person aspect of the plan. And also, additional guidance from the state continues to come and alter our plans. Also, perhaps most importantly, or equally importantly at least, is the ongoing public health guidance from state and local officials as they track the status of the pandemic. And we respond to that along with other institutions in the state and beyond.
So Peter, could you talk about the partial hybrid plan that we are tentatively proposing in our first draft?
So this is, this is really the core of our proposal. This is it in a nutshell. We're referring to it as a partial hybrid plan. This plan allows for elementary K through 3 students to attend five days per week in person. Through lots of creative work around space and around utilizing our resources creatively, we would allow for those students to come back for five and a half hours a day and then have a remote learning aspect in the afternoon once they return home for 60 minutes, which is focused largely on the asynchronous Unified Arts Experience around art, music, P, library and science. Our school level, our principals will get into more details about various aspects of the plan, but that's elementary K through 3. Then there also will be in upper elementary.
Excuse me for one sec. The screen went away for me. Did it go away for everybody else? I can't see the presentation anymore. Can everyone else see the presentation? Is it just me?
I can see it.
I can see it, too. Okay. I'm going to dial out and dial back in. Or click your options or something. Maybe something got bumped. No. Okay. Peter, all set?
Yep. So this, again, elementary K through 3 would be in-person daily. And then in grades four through 12+, we would have a hybrid model where students would be divided into two cohorts. And based upon our proposed model, Cohort One would be in school in person on Monday and Tuesday. Cohort Two would be in school in person on Thursday and Friday. And then on Wednesday, we would alternate between Cohort One and Cohort Two. And so, and again, our principals will get into more details around that. There's also would be a full remote learning program option for students who don't feel, because of their health conditions or other circumstances, that they're able to return to either this full-in-person or hybrid model. So that option will be there as well. We also look to, in order to ensure safety, do a phased-in approach for students entering. So we're still kind of contemplating what that might look like, but some way of making sure that we can bring students in, you know, perhaps one grade level per school at a time in order to build up to this, you know, safe in-person model that are part of both the elementary K through 3 as well as the four through 12 hybrid options.
So some of the guidance, some of the data that we used to try to inform our decisions were the parent surveys. One of the surveys that we sent out said that 77% of parents feel ready to return. At that time, we didn't put three-foot or six-foot in that survey because we still weren't sure. And more data that we received, because it is much safer to have a six-foot model, and that's why at this point, 77% felt safe to return based on what they knew then, without knowing whether it was a three-foot or a six-foot model. without knowing whether it was a three-foot or a six-foot model. Also, 71% of parents were leaning towards that they would not necessarily need to have us transport their children to school in the fall because they are going to come up with other options. And this will also help us. If that actually comes true, that 71% will transport their children, then Keith's going to talk about the feasibility of trying to get students back to school safely in the busing. And that will really impact our ability to do so effectively. Also, based on, we propose a potential hybrid model. And parents did say that if we could offer a week on, week off, that they would prefer the hybrid model that would have, 57% preferred a model that would have days on, days off. We proposed a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, one week. The hybrid model would be an in-person for one cohort. Thursday, Friday would be the remote portion for cohort B. And then the following week, that would flip. So you'd have a Monday, Tuesday would have the remote portion. And Wednesday, Thursday, Friday would be the in-person for the cohort B, it would reverse. And a small amount of people did say if they were a hybrid model, 14% in this particular model, did say that they would still choose a remote option. But the numbers in other surveys did come up higher for possibility of having the students have remote instruction.
So obviously, any plan that we would choose would have some constraints. So our plan was based around a six-foot minimum distance assumption. At that, at that distance, we cannot accommodate all students in person pre-K through 12 plus. So that eliminated the full return model for us. In addition, none of the cafeterias can support all students sitting six feet apart without masks, all facing the same direction. While we will have some elementary students eating lunch in their classrooms, in our opinion, it's not really feasible or, or safe to do that at the secondary level. At one point, we did talk about double sessions, but that's not possible as there wouldn't be enough time between sessions to clean the schools for a second cohort. In addition, the bus cost would be virtually double of what we're paying now. And then with regards to our regular transportation, the July 22th DESI guidelines that said we could have a three-foot distance on the bus, have windows open when weather allows for it. So students will be sitting on our buses. We have 77 passenger buses, 26 benches. They'll be sitting one on the window, then the row in front of it would be on the aisle and back and forth, side to side. It would allow for 25 students and one monitor. We'd have the monitor just because, first, it's a DESI recommendation or suggestion, less than a recommendation, it's a suggestion. But more to the point, it's just to, you're going to have an assigned seat in order to be able to maintain that you stay in that seat, not move around the buses. And to try to keep things as safe as possible, we would, we would have to do it that way. That would allow for, we would up ourselves from the 12 buses the elementary runs to 15 buses at a small cost. And that would allow for us to have 375 students on a bus, on a run, excuse me, on a bus, on a run. While that seems like it's a lot, it would, it would at least meet our legal obligations, K through six, which is students who live greater than two miles. We would, at that point in time, have some sort of mechanism to lottery, is my guess right now, off the remaining seats for anybody else who would want to participate. It obviously doesn't meet our needs. As I said, stayed here, this past year or last year, we transported 1,850 students. Obviously, we're going to be nowhere near that number. But at this point, that's where we're at. So the next slide has additional staffing needs. This is just to give you a flavor of, of things that we've been talking about. So we've been talking about building substitutes, basically a permanent substitute, one or two per building, just because the amount of people who would be out, bus monitors that I just mentioned, additional custodians to do the ongoing cleaning, the full big plan talks about the additional cleanings that we're going to be doing during the day. Daily substitutes, obviously, we're going to need more of those. A health and safety monitor, which you would, or health and safety monitors, that you'll hear more about for your Thursday meeting, where Susan's going to come forward with a recommendation for a new position. And obviously, paraprofessionals, which we need in normal years. But add to that now the additional needs of having a hybrid model. And there are other positions that, depending on where we end up with this, may or may not come into play. But either way, that's at least a flavor of it.
So just as Keith said, I just want him, that health and safety monitor, that position that he mentioned, I do have the job description that you're ready to share for Thursday night's meeting as well. And I do want Jamie Slaney to talk to us, our principal from Placentino, of the pre-K five potential model.
Good evening. So Mr. Kam and I are going to provide an overview and give some more details that Dr. Patel has started to give you about the proposed models for pre-K to five. As you can see through this graphic, we have our youngest learners at Placentino, starting at age three, through our fifth graders at Miller School. And we tried to really look at a continuum of their needs, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. But it is really important to recognize that the Department of Ed has asked us to think about certain groups of students as high-need students who need in-person learning every day. And one of those groups is preschool. So this model does allow for us to maintain our current preschool program with the sessions that we have. Next slide, please. So a little bit about our rationale. So it was really important for not only our district group and our administrators, but at Placentino, we had a group of 27 amazing educators. They included classroom teachers, special educators, counselors, nurses, school psychologists, paraprofessionals, and administrators. Every week we met, we either met as a large group or we met in small groups. And again and again, I was just, felt so lucky to be their leader, to be honest with you. And what they were able to do is through their lens, which is so important, give us ideas and feedback about the different models. So for instance, we proposed if we were in person, what would teaching and learning look like? How would it look different? Let's reflect back to what remote learning looked like. And as we refer to remote learning, it's really important that our audience recognizes that what we did from March to June was crisis teaching. And we're shifting to a different model of remote learning. But what did we learn from that crisis teaching and how we can plan? So this group brainstormed all that and helped kind of feed the district-level committee and in turn, the plan. So we looked at, so you might be asking, why are youngest learners in? And some people might even say, you know, they have years to make it up. Why wouldn't, why would you want them to come full in? Well, the data actually tells us something very different. The important milestone is actually by the end of third grade. If you look at our elementary curriculum, students through grade three are learning to read. After grade three, they're, they're learning, they're reading to learn, I apologize. So it's truly important that by the end of grade three, we have those solid literacy and numeracy skills. And the importance of it is really evidenced in research. A study by the Department of Ed, three-quarters of students who are poor readers by the end of third grade were poor grader readers in high school. A long-term study found that students who weren't proficient by the end of third grade were four times likely to drop out of high school. 74% of struggling readers don't ever catch up. And children who have lower achievement by the end of third grade tend to have increased behavioral and social challenges in higher levels. It's important. Not only did the department say that there were certain groups that needed to be in full time, what they asked us is if you can't get everyone in full time, prioritize some of your youngest learners. In addition, I lived this personally, but our, our data from our surveys helped us really support this. So we asked parents, how independent was your child during remote learning? 76, a pre-Ked, 76% of pre-Ked to respondents said that they needed constant support to frequent support. And this was compared to high school students who were 79% independent and could learn or are very independent. That doesn't say or represent that we think that remote learning or the hybrid model is the best model. It's just talking about that this model, going back to equity, goes back to thinking about what are the developmental needs of our youngest students? Who, if they were offered that remote model, it's very difficult to meet in terms of their executive functioning, their attention, their independence. When we look at your executive function, which is kind of the conductor of your brain to help you organize your thoughts and your decisions, it's really not even built until you're eight years old. So when I received emails from families saying, "My child needs me all day long," yes, because that's developmentally appropriate. So we really felt that we should prioritize our youngest learners in this way. Also, the size of our students and the nature of the elementary classroom, we were able to create these really small cohorts. And these cohorts, which I'll explain next, will provide more for the safety of our staff and our students compared to when children are moving between classes. Next slide, please. So this gives you a little bit of the components of our in-person model plan. Lunch will occur in the classroom. Unless we have students who have life-threatening allergies, then that entire class will be in the cafeteria so that we don't have allergens in the room. Every class is going to be given an outdoor space that's going to be for learning and recess and mass breaks. We are so lucky in Holliston to have these beautiful buildings with large classrooms that allow and have, many of our classrooms have adjoining doors, that we're able to spread out a single class between two classrooms at six feet. In order to do this, to staff it, we'll staff it with a general educator and then a second educator in the room so that we have someone in both rooms. The second educator could be a paraprofessional, a special educator, a co-teacher. We looked at every single space at Placentino and Miller. Cheryl Lassie, our assistant principal and I, we joke that we can now clearly tell third graders the importance of why they need to learn square footage. We know every single square foot of these classrooms. So we were, for seven classes, 14 classrooms, because we're doubling classrooms, we were short. So this amazing administrative team pulled together, and we, in this model, are going to utilize 14 of Adams classrooms. It's their sixth-grade wing, which David Jordan's going to be able to explain that a little bit. And hopefully, anyone who's having a little concerns of their elementary student being at the middle school, help alleviate them immediately. In addition, we're using all of our large spaces, our library, our gymnasium, our art rooms, our music rooms, to be able to do this. We're going to have safe cohorts of 20 to 24 students and two to three adults, so that we won't have the mixing of the cohorts through. In order to do this, our class, the schedule for the day will end one hour early. And then we'll be able to provide our contractual planning time for all of our teachers. And our students will go home, and they'll have an asynchronous experience for Unified Arts. We believe greatly in the arts. We also know that our Unified Arts teachers currently see 29 classes in their schedule, which is not safe for them or for the students. Next slide. In addition, our students will have the option of a remote learning program if they decide they want to be remote learning only. The way that we're going to do this is that we're going to assign a grade-level remote learning teacher. I mentioned before, it was crisis learning before. And now, what remote learning's going to look like, it's going to have increased synchronous time. And the schedule is going to match and mirror the in-person time. It's going to evolve, have small group, whole group, and we'll show you a schedule a little bit later on. Also through this, if a child needs any specialized supportive services, they'll get that throughout the day. I believe the next slide is Mr. Kam.
So when Jamie said we looked at every space in the building, we did. We actually looked to see if we could get all the way up through grade five in person. And if we were to try and do that, we would need 21 additional classrooms with the model that we were trying to do with two teach, one, two classrooms hooked up to one group of students. So we backed up a little bit. And so we took it down to grade three. And so, working with grade three, we figured we could get everybody in pre-K through grade three. And then, starting in grade four and five, we would start a hybrid model. Now, Jamie talked about the survey results that showed the, the level of independence of those pre-K through grade three really wasn't there. Those students really needed the assistance of the parents in the classroom. The results that we got from the parents said they were more independent in grade four and five. So we do feel comfortable making a hybrid model with this. We also feel like if we were to move into full or move into remote, this hybrid model would allow us to move either way on the pendulum to be able to do that. And in this hybrid model, as Jamie said, in, in the spring, we were in crisis teaching. And now, we are looking at more synchronous instruction. Instead of, we had a lot of asynchronous, we had a lot of synchronous, but it wasn't to the amount that we were looking for or the community was looking for. But it was something that we put together at the last moment. Move on, next slide. So in this, the, the classes will, there'll be two adjoining classrooms side by side. And we'll also utilize the library, gymnasium, art room, music room. We are going to try, in, in staffing, we're going to create a triad. So you'll have your two general ed teachers, and you'll have a third adult, whether that's a paraprofessional, special educator, or co-teacher. One of the general ed teachers will be your in-school teacher. And then you'll have your remote teacher teaching the same content at the same time to the students who are learning remotely. We'll have our six-foot distancing. We will have an A group and a B group. And we're still working on how we're going to do that across the district. One of the things it could be, it could be alphabetical. But those are things we're still working out as we go through this. The thing about this, we're also going to use the outdoor spaces. Lunch is going to be six-foot in the cafeteria. The schedule, the, the students will leave at one o'clock. And at that one o'clock, they will go home and they will participate in asynchronous Unified Arts. That will allow us to have common planning time at the end of the day, which is contractual for all teachers. You can move on, next slide. So at the, at remote learning in grade four, five is a little bit different. Remote learning in grade four is going to attach to one of the hybrid classrooms. And so, a child who is fully remote will be a part of a classroom's A cohort and B cohort that is receiving remote learning every day. Because the remote teacher and the in-school teacher are teaching the same things simultaneously, that child who is fully remote can, will be at the same place with all the other children or students who are getting their education. Now, if that child decides that they want to participate in hybrid, they're able to do that because they are, they, they can join an A group or a B group, and they can come in throughout, if they choose to come in hybrid. The school day schedule is going to be the same as the in-school. And again, they're going to have the asynchronous units, Unified Arts at the end of the day. Next slide. So a, a sample schedule, please don't use this as the schedule that's going to happen. We're providing a Placentino schedule, and we're providing a Miller schedule. So this would be for in-person and remote for pre-K to grade three. So actually, pre-K to grade two. So Placentino students get in 9:00 to 9:30 morning meeting. 9:30 to 11:30 might be that morning block. So you might have whole group instruction, small group instruction. Mindfulness. Mindfulness activities. You might have your service providers provide services to some of the students. Eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty might be your lunch, your, your movement break, your recess. You'll have an afternoon learning block, twelve-thirty to two-twenty-five. Again, you, you, let's say you were doing ELA in the morning, you may be doing math in the afternoon. Again, your whole group, your small groups, different mindfulness activities. And then at two-twenty-five, the students would be dismissed to go home, either pickup or on the bus. And when they get home, they would participate in an asynchronous or a taped Unified Arts lesson for that day. Next slide.
I just wanted to pause for a second. I neglected to mention that this presentation has a lot of information, which is also echoed in the larger document. And we will get this presentation on the website as well for some of the details that are in this, so we may not go over completely.
So sim- similar for a Placentino, we just use our times. Yes, we are starting at seven-thirty this year, and so morning meeting, seven-thirty to eight. Eight to ten-thirty might be a learning block. Again, the ten-thirty to eleven-thirty wellness, lunch, movement break. Eleven-thirty to one would be another learning block. And then students would go home at one o'clock, doing the asynchronous lesson at the end of the day at home. And that's, and this would be for the in-person, hybrid and remote. So all three would utilize a schedule like this. I think now we are on to Adams Middle School. David Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Kind. Similar to Mr. Kind, we are trying to, and you're going to see this in, in the middle school plan, is there's consistency between the four-five plan, the middle school plan, and the, and the high school plan as far as how we have scheduled out our day. When I, the first thing I wanted to cover was, which Dr. Slaney had alluded to a little bit, was the use of the, the middle school to house some of our Placentino students. We kind of created, as, you know, our administrative team were kind of creating a schedule that kind of net safety and flexibility. We realized that we were actually creating space in our building. We weren't creating staff, we knew we were short on staff, but we were creating space in our building. And Dr. Slaney and I, due to kind of some creative conversations, realized that we could house fourteen classes of the elementary school at the, at the middle school. So if you've ever walked into the middle school, through the front door, you have, on your right, you have a first floor and second floor wing of the building to the right. That can be completely shut off by doors, separate bathrooms, separate offices, and separate classrooms. And then you can walk a complete hundred, hundred-and-fifty yards to the other side of the building where the seventh and eighth grade are. So we have the potential to create a school within a school in the sixth grade to house part of our elementary school and still be able to serve our middle school students in a hybrid model. As we were building the middle school model, we were looking at kind of try, trying to create as much safety, consistency and flexibility in this schedule. And I, as I talked about, the kind of with Placentino joining us, this schedule we created was going to be the schedule regardless of Placentino coming to us or not. This is the, the schedule that we were going, going forward with. So safety is that, you know, our, our kind of main tenants that came out of our working, our building-based working groups was around minimal transitions. When we looked at personnel and looked at staffing and moving around the building, one of our greatest recommendations was around minimal transitions, interactions outside of cohorts. So do we look at small cohorts within the building? And we have the ability, the ability kind of within teams, acknowledging the assumption that roughly eighty percent of our student population will be coming into the building. Give or take ten percent, we still have the ability to kind of still move pretty flexibly. That would create eleven-student classrooms. So you would have a single cohort that you would be locked into with eleven students. You would be in a fixed classroom with two educators. And then you would have, or you would have, yes, two educators per group of eleven. And then you would have your core teachers and Unified Arts teachers, world language, academic support that would rotate through that space to serve the students. As you see in this, this kind of gives you an idea of what we are. We typically, in a normal school year, would run three teams. We run two large teams that are forty percent of our, forty percent and forty percent, so eighty percent of our student population. And then a smaller team that is twenty percent of your, of our student population. What do you know, that corresponds to the percentage that our families are indicating that may be out. So we're consolidating our team three and going to run two, two teams over the year and leverage that, that staff that would be made available. As, as in the other cohort or hybrid models, is we're running a cohort A in-person, cohort B remote on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fri- Friday, cohort A remote, or B in-person. And then we'll rotate every other Wednesday. I, I, I feel the schedule provides, and we'll move on to the schedule here in a second, but this provides consistency. This is a fully collaborative and aligned, so we're looking at fully collaborative and aligned curriculum. And the student schedule experience, the student experience does not change as guidance changes or as student safety changes. And as a student decides to go remote or come back, they are still part of their same team. And the curriculum stays the same for them and the schedule stays with them no matter how the guidance changes at the state or federal level. Additionally, this provides a lot of flexibility. This provides us the ability to fluidly move between full and hybrid and remote depending on the individual needs. If we can move on to the next slide for me. So this is just a, a sample schedule of any given student that we might have in any given grade that we would have. Our students, so our section one, two, three and four, that would be known as your social studies, English, math and social studies. And then WL is world language, AS is academic support and UA is unified art. So depending on the day, depending on the student and the needs, they would either have a world language, a unified art or academic support depending on that individual student that would fall during this period of time. I would remind you that these students are going to be placed by, in their cohort strategically. So they are not transitioning, we don't have a bunch of different staff. These are staff that are associated with this specific cohort. And that is due to some really careful scheduling due to our new SSA, Nicole Murray, and some creative thinking by Jess Beatty, our assistant principal. At twelve-forty-two, twelve-thirty, we are, this is going to be a lunch flex transition. This is, the, the thought is, is that we have our synchronous instruction that occurs in the morning in that eight-ten to twelve-forty-two period of time. And then there's this flexible kind of transition where some families may choose to dismiss their students and take them home so that they have an asynchronous, so that they, when they, they can have lunch at home and then access the asynchronous portion at the home. That said, we may have a lot of availability for safe spaces within the school for students to access their Unified Arts classes remotely, but from the building to be the standard end of the day under the new schedule, which is two-thirty-three. We is, which I don't think Keith indicated, our, the way that our bus transition is that our pickup would be, due to the kind of the scheduling of, of things, would be three o'clock. That actually works out really well, based, based on the feedback that we receive from our teachers is with our time changed to eight-ten. We had typically run like a one-hour period of time. We were looking at ways that we could strategically consolidate that period of time and make it more effective. So we're providing roughly a twenty-seven to thirty-minute period of time for extra help. But also how we can creatively look at students accessing safe spaces to act, to access remote or virtual clubs as well. This is a incredibly flexible schedule. It, it works, this is the same schedule, this is not the, just the hybrid or just the remote or just the in-person. This is the schedule that regardless of the plan, this is the ones that, this is the schedule that our students would be accessing. Additionally, kind of our afternoon, we are looking at grab and grow, go lunches. Time for outside play within cohort and flexible kind of movement there. I, I'm really, you know, our, our team is really proud of this schedule and the thoughts that we have and are glad that we're able to accommodate the elementary school to kind of make this happen as well. So if we can move on to the next slide. So I won't, I'll go too much further. I think Dr. Patel kind of talked a little bit about the six-foot versus the, the three-foot. Although the state had put out some initial guidance about the, the three-foot thoughts. For us, six feet, where, three feet does not, when we measure out our, our spaces in our rooms, provides us really with no buffer at all. Middle schoolers make mistakes, teachers make mistakes, things happen. And we need to be able to have a fluid environment that allows us to kind of be able to move between classrooms just in case. So this provides us a buffer by doing the six-foot and we can, we can safely fit our students within there. And I talked about the Placentino wing. Our sixth grade is going to be, since our Unified Arts will be pulled off of class and will be part of cohort, because the students are the ones that are not moving. Our sixth grade classes, our sixth grade students will be housing Unified Arts, stand typical Unified Arts and World Language classrooms. And then our seventh and eighth grade will still be assigned to their, their standard wings that they have. Seventh grade on the first floor and eighth grade on the, on the second floor. And we are really excited about the opportunity of really finding and leveraging safe spaces that we can have within the building. These safe spaces include the band room, library, auditorium, gym, cafeteria. This allows for kind of safe, safe mask breaks, movements. Additionally, when students need to access full day curriculum or need to want to, need to, due to their own, their own family needs, need to access the full day, can you utilize those safe spaces to access any asynchronous work as well? Additionally, you know, you know, our, our guidance services, our student services will be embedded both in-person and remotely as well. And we'll have some more time to kind of discuss that further in the future. Think that transition us. So synchronous, we talked a little bit about this, this would be our in-person and live remote. This would be breakouts and, and small groups. All of our classes will have a co-teacher. That means that even if you are part of the cohort and you are remote or you're in-person, you're accessing the live class. That's a lot to manage if you're a single teacher, but that's the idea of why we've created a co-teaching cohort of eleven students. So you'll have two teachers per eleven, two educators per eleven students, so that you can have one who is focusing on the remote while the other is transitioning and engaging students in the in-person discussion. Or vice versa, and they can flop that, it depends on the relationship of the two educators that are there. Classes could have a special educator paired with each team for live academic support, so live in-person academic support. And then world language teachers and Unified Arts teachers will be paired with teams for four to six-week in-person modules. Obviously, we don't have enough Unified Arts teachers. If you know kind of roughly about our Unified Arts teacher schedules, we have like a music teacher that serves six hundred students. Obviously, we don't that, want that kind of contact. So that we are looking at four-to-six-week cohort associations, so that our music teacher, for example, would be associated with a cohort of eleven to twenty-two students for like a four-to-six-week module, and then they'll rotate on to the next group. And then our asynchronous as well, they'll access the Unified Arts as well during that period of time. And that will be virtual, either in-building or virtual remote. Thank you, and I think that moves us on to the high school. Mrs. Bodley.
Nine to twelve, Nicole, please.
Yep. So I always have the benefit of going forth in terms of the principals in the buildings, which means that my colleagues have done a phenomenal job before me explaining the planning process, the rationale, the hybrid model and some of the details of how we've come together as a district to really make sure that we are meeting the needs of every single student in this district. And although that may look a little different depending on the grade level or the school building, it really has been a collective effort to make sure that we're supporting the needs of all of our students. So I am going to just briefly go through some of the highlights of the plan. I will talk a little bit about what the bell schedule will look like, and then I'll talk a little bit about just sort of how we view this in terms of the continuum, if things change as we move forward. I do want to start by highlighting the tremendous efforts of our educators and our students who have been part of the building-based planning team. Similar to the other buildings, we've had twenty-five educators, a variety of different roles within the school. But twenty-five educators and fifteen high school students who have been meeting on a weekly basis to talk about, you know, all the different models, to brainstorm, to share ideas. They are innovative and creative and really have the needs of the students and the teachers at the forefront. And I'm, I'm so thankful that we have so many people who have wanted to be part of that and who have dedicated their time, certainly over the summer, but have dedicated their time to, to really work together on that. The highlights of our plan, similar to the other buildings or similar to the middle school, we are looking at a remote model where half of our students are coming in Monday and Tuesday, half of them coming in Thursday and Friday, and then alternating Wednesday. We are looking to start the school year with a fully remote first week or two weeks in order to make sure that we can bring all students together. One of the pieces that I think we're all aware of is that at any point during the school year, we are going to have a percentage of students who are in remote learning. Now, that may be a small percentage of students who are in remote learning because of medical needs and they are opting to remain in remote learning. Or that might mean we are in a hybrid model where fifty percent of our students are in remote and fifty percent are in-person. Or, as we've said, if things shift a little bit differently and we end up at some point during the year being fully remote, then we'll have a hundred percent of the students in remote. And so we know that remote piece of it is really, really important. And so we're looking at that first week or two of having all of our students remote so that all of our students can start together. So that the educators in the building can really focus on building those relationships with all students regardless of whether they are remaining in remote for the year, or whether they're in hybrid, or whether it's a Monday or a Friday. We can have everybody start together and we feel like that's a really essential piece. And we've heard that feedback from teachers and from students as well. The hybrid model would then follow, so we would then have one cohort come in again for the two days and then the second cohort come in. We would not be serving lunch in the school building, so we would transition to home around lunchtime. We would be providing a grab and go option for students. And we do know that there will be a few students who remain in the building because their only means of transportation is bus. And so we're looking at how we can support those students. But for the large majority of our students, they will transition home at lunchtime and we do have the option of the grab and go for students. The last block of the day will then be a remote learning block. Again, the real benefit of this is the ability to bring everybody together in that learning environment so that we can make sure that we are meeting the needs of every single student in our school. And as you've heard from the other principals and other members of the administration, it's really important that as we, as the school year ebbs and flows, and we don't know what that's going to look like yet, but that as we move forward through this process, that we can seamlessly transition. So if we are able to transition into a hybrid model where our students are six feet apart, and if that's going really well, and if at some point in the year we transition into three feet, or if we transition into remote, we need to make sure that the transitions are as seamless as possible so that our educators are prepared, so that our students are prepared and so that our families are prepared. And that's why I think you're hearing in all the different buildings that the bell schedules that are being carefully constructed are in the best interest of students and to provide the best learning experiences, but are also crafted in a way that they can transition to the different models regardless of whether it's three feet or six feet or remote learning. So let's take a look at our next slide and I'll go through a little bit. I just went through some of the initial pieces of the remote learning. And again, when we say initial remote learning, I really am focusing on that first week or two before we start bringing students in person. As I spoke about, all students would be included in this initial relationship building, developing of skills, also just acclimating to, again, to the online environment, what that looks like. And as I think you heard Dr. Slaney say, what we were doing in the spring was, was really crisis teaching. And I, I'm so proud of the work that all the educators did in the district, that all the students did in the district, the families did, because it really was a partnership with families. But that was a direct result of leaving on a Thursday afternoon and not coming back into the building, right? We left that Thursday afternoon and we thought we were coming back in on Friday, and by Friday evening, we didn't. And we remained out. And so that crisis teaching, what that looked like is very different than I think a lot of the really, the ability to, to look at the remote learning differently, the ability to have a little bit of time to catch our breath and to plan for that. But also the incredible insight that came out of what we've learned from the spring. And that is how we started our building-based group, and I know that's how all of the other schools started. And I know that's how all of the other schools started as well with the planning teams to really look at what were the pieces that we learned that were really, really powerful and beneficial? And what were the pieces that we learned that we don't really want to repeat again? And I think that both are equally valuable as we move forward. We also, as I said, have an opportunity for teachers to really develop some best practices when it comes to remote learning and to really make sure that we are supporting the needs of every single student, regardless of the environment that they're in. So taking a look at the next slide with our bell schedule. Our bell schedule, and as you've heard the other principals discuss in their schedules, our times are changing for next year as well. So we will be eight, 10 to 2:43 with our new start and end times. The bell schedule that we have been able to craft provides an opportunity for students to be in person for the first three blocks of the day, including our directed study block. For those of you who aren't as familiar with high school schedule, typically, because we run a block schedule semesterized school, typically, students are taking four classes at a time. And then we have a directed study block, which is usually just a little bit longer and provides an opportunity for students to take band and chorus, to receive special education services, to meet with teachers, ask questions, gain insight into a project they might be working on. And it's really an opportunity to, to have a chance to work with their teachers a little bit more in terms of some of the individual questions that they may have. So what we're looking at is providing that opportunity for students to be in person for those first three blocks as well as directed study block. We've adjusted the times a little bit to account for the fact that we will need additional time for mass breaks, for transitions in the, for passing time transitions in the school building. The way the building is oriented is going to look a little bit different than what students were used to and what teachers were used to. At 12:43, that is our transition time home. So students will leave the building at that point, transition back home, have some time to, again, have a mass break, eat some lunch and prepare for the last block of the day. And then that last block of the day will be a remote learning block. The reason why I have first block, second block, third block, fourth block and not the letters is because we will still maintain our four-day rotating schedule. So that means it will be a different block that is in that remote learning block. So for example, an A day would be ABC and then D would be the remote learning block. Whereas a B day would be B, C, D, A. So the last block would be an A block. And so that's important too, to understand that that's rotating through. And so it provides different learning experiences and different opportunities for students. And then just to sum up with my last slide, just a couple of key points again that we've really been trying to highlight. We are looking at the continuum of models so that we can transition seamlessly depending on the current medical information and medical advice, depending on adjustments we might need to make to our practices in this, in this school district. We are building an additional transition time in between classes so that students can navigate their way through so that they can have a mass break. And then we are looking at transitioning home around lunchtime so that we're not serving lunch in the school building. And again, just to really highlight, the remote session at the end provides an opportunity for all students to be together. And that's a really important piece, especially for the students who are in remote learning the majority of the time, because they've opted to do that. I also just want to highlight, one of the interesting things for me in this process is that Holliston High School is one of the very few schools in Massachusetts that was running a block schedule prior to going to, you know, remote learning. And so over the last few weeks, I participate in a pretty active Jaba Lake group with about 35 area principals. And I've had a number of districts reach out and inquire about our block schedule, inquire about how it works, inquire about the timing of it. Because we were already set up pretty well in Holliston to be able to minimize the transitions for students. So we're not a school that maintains seven classes where students are moving around seven times during the day. And that has been really helpful. It's also really helpful to have those blocks built in so that there's a good chunk of time where students can really dive deep into the learning. And it also allows for looking at the way we do in-person and remote learning a little bit differently so that we can really highlight some of the best practices from project-based learning and other aspects of instructional practices that will be really beneficial for our students.
Before we move on, Keith, I think there was a clarifying question related to this, the high school model?
Yes, it was just, the school committee wants some clarification on why the high school is starting, you know, one to two weeks later as opposed on day one. Just if you could explain a little more there, Nicole.
Sure. So this is what I was discussing in terms of knowing that at any point we will have students in different learning environments. So throughout the entire year, we know that we'll have a percentage of students who remain in remote learning because of, you know, current medical needs that the student or the family may have. We also know that in a hybrid model, at any point, we will have half of the school, and again, I say half, those are rough estimates, but half of the school in person and half of the school in remote learning. And so the idea to start the high school in terms of students actually physically coming into the building a week or two weeks, and I say a week or two weeks, there's still pieces that need to be worked out with the overall school calendar and, you know, some pieces in terms of the plan itself. But that first week or so will give an opportunity for all students to be together so that we don't have a cohort on day one that is starting in person and another group day one that is starting in remote learning, as well as that group that's in remote learning who are going to be there full-time. So it allows for students to all be together in that same class. It allows for the teachers' undivided attention to really be on the class as a whole and be able to talk to the students about what they can expect when they come into the school. What is it going to look like in the classroom? What are the expectations that the teacher has? Start building those relationships from day one when every single student is together and allow those students to also start building relationships with each other in that peer group in the classroom. It also is a district, and I think one of the things you've heard throughout in terms of the district, is that we are really working together to make sure that all four buildings are not in isolation, that all four buildings are working hand in hand to the benefit of the district as a whole and allowing the students at the high school to start a week later in terms of physically coming into the building, not in terms of their education, but in terms of physically coming into the building. Not only do we get the benefits that I discussed in terms of the teacher and setting up the classroom and the expectations and building the relationships, but it also allows us a district, it allows us to focus on starting to get some of the elementary students in, making sure that we are able to transition those students in, have that focus in terms of the bus routes, in terms of families, what is that going to feel like? And then slowly phase into our students as well.
Thank you, Nicole. We're just going to have us, Kelly's going to talk to us about special populations.
So first, I just want to indicate that DESI has been somewhat prescriptive in some of their communication to us in regards to a number of things related to special populations. And the first is that students must receive all of the services that are documented in their IEP. It may be that some of those services look a little different than what they typically are provided, but all of those services will be provided. And I can give you an example, if a student has difficulty, perhaps they're receiving one of their related services remotely as opposed to in person. And they are not able to attend for as long as their typical in-person service would last. So we might break that service into two pieces. They would still get the same amount of service, but we might break it into two smaller sessions, very focused and supported, but the service might just look different. One of the things that we had seen when we first started in March was that some of our students who were struggling initially through March and through April really were able to pick up and do better during May and in June, simply because we had very strong parent communication and partnership. And we were starting to figure out what was the piece about the students learning when they were in school that was not being provided when they were at home. And a lot of that had to do with executive functioning support, with laying out their day and the things that they needed to accomplish. With that less structure, they were really dependent upon that school structure. So one of the things that we really want to make sure when we come back to school for a lot of our hybrid kids, is that we have that strong communication and partnership with parents. We want frequent communication saying what's working and what's not working. And for the things that are not working as well, we need to figure out how we're going to tweak, tweak it to help that student do better from there forward. They were very prescriptive about the two groups that we were to prioritize for in-person instruction. The first group, as Jamie Slaney had already mentioned, is the pre-school age students. And the second group is students with significant and complex needs. That is likely to be a very small percentage of students and typically will relate to our students who are in our continuum programs, such as our network classroom or our basis classroom, or some of our classrooms who provide social emotional support. But students with significant and complex needs will include at least two of the following, and these are provided by DESI to us. Services provided outside of the general education classroom. Service providers are special educators and related service providers. And that their special education services constitute more than 75% of their school day. That is our highest, most significant complex need students. Also, we are going to prioritize, and take a look at this on a very individualized basis, students who are homeless or in foster care or might be receiving congregate care, and students who are duly identified as English learners. So students who really have, are struggling with not only learning English as a second language, but also may have a learning disability on top of that. So some of the things that we have learned through the spring, we will certainly carry forward into the fall. But I really think that that parent communication and partnership is going to be very important for us to be able to know what we might need to tweak and do differently.
So with that, there is a lot of information to digest tonight. A lot of information that is contained in that first draft of our 50-page document, which is definitely going to be edited again throughout this week as we get more information. We hope to be able to add some more clarifying information in that document. And obviously, the school committee is going to have a lot of input within the next few nights as well, particularly on Thursday. So we are, most importantly, need to consider our safety concerns for students and staff. And that will definitely continue to guide our potential changes to the proposed plans. Right now, again, as I said, in this snapshot of time, based on the guidance from DESI, multiple guidances, based on multiple reports from medical experts within the field, based on what's happening in Massachusetts. Things could change, as we said, they could ebb and flow and change at any time. But based on where we are right now, this proposal is the best guess of what we think we can offer feasibly in the fall, in the best interest of staff and students, to get that in-person learning model. But that continuum of services is so critical because we have to have a backup plan should this model not be the model that we're able to use in the fall. And with the consideration for that six-foot physical distance really provides limitations that we cannot have a full in-person model, no matter what grade levels we're talking about. It's not feasible with the six-foot person model in there. The cohorts do allow, and that's the real, at all levels, keeping those cohorts as small as possible will still be able to provide a rigorous schedule for students is going to be critical. Because if there is a situation that arises, we will need to do contact tracing. And that's another reason why having two days versus every other day. Some people had asked about whether we could propose an every other day model. But by having students at the hybrid models grouped for a couple of days together, that will also potentially give us more time to do contact tracing and make decisions if we have to go to a more restrictive model of learning in the future. The need to implement all of the health and safety measures is critical as well. And those are well drafted in the proposal from our health and safety group. We have to make sure that considerations for what would happen in the event that a student is home waiting for test results, quarantine, all those pieces that have to happen, which is again, more well documented in that lengthier model that we have shared with you tonight, the proposed first draft. And with all of these discussions, masks and face coverings required for all students and staff will be critical. We're hearing it socially, we're hearing it. Some of the concerns around some upticks in society have been because masks and face coverings were not worn in some cohorts of, in social situations. So we will be expecting all staff and students to wear masks and face coverings as much as possible to prevent any, any impact from the coronavirus if someone did ever get exposed. So what are the next steps related to where we go from here? Again, I do want to reiterate, this is truly a draft proposal that in a short timeline, we were able to put together, the administrative team. We couldn't get as many people into the planning sessions as we would like. We tried to take all the input and the thought and the discussion that's happened in previous discussions. And then this is our draft proposal right now with the information that we do have. We really want to make sure that this is not intended to be a finite discussion. This is truly to be a fluid discussion. We really want to hear from parents, we want to hear from staff. And even though tonight we will not have much time for questions, we really want to give people time to digest the document, the longer document that we shared on the website. We are sharing out, Dan McLeod, our director of technology, will send out a quick little document that will allow parents or staff members, two different documents, to send us a question and that we can hopefully try to organize and prioritize some for tomorrow night with our staff Q and A and the following night with our parent Q and A. So we can have some more school committee discussion on August 5th, on Wednesday, after our parent forum. We'll have another school committee meeting on August 6th and hopefully be able to vote on the proposal after some additional potential discussion. And even at that, this is, again, this is a proposal as of right now. There is still much work to do. We have to make sure that we have ample time to bargain any impact to the collective bargaining agreement that is based on the proposal that we have in this draft proposal. But more importantly, to even, if we decide that this is the model that we're voting on to move forward to DESI on August 10th, there is a lot of work that needs to happen and it needs to happen collectively with educator voice, with parent voice, with school committee voice. We want to make sure that, I would like to be part of smaller parent and staff meetings, forums at the building level, hopefully as soon as next week, but certainly into the following week. I have to put that schedule together with our teams. We would want to have, at least that gives us a smaller venue where we're not having all parents together in the same discussion. And then definitely need to have some more collaborative work groups at the school and at the district level, potentially using some of the work groups that we had already established at the building level to have some more of these targeted conversations around what might this plan look like if we were to implement it in the fall? And what, how can we revise the proposal if it needs to be revised? But also, at the district subcommittee level, we didn't have a lot of meetings. We had two weeks of meeting where we tried to gather as much information as possible. But then we had our retreat on 28th and 29th of July. And we had to get some of the paper document done so that we could have this proposal to share with you so that we had something to talk about, to get the discussion going, knowing that there's still a lot of details to work out. So I encourage families, I encourage staff to send us their questions. Again, even tomorrow night and the following night, we won't get to all of those questions. It's an awful lot of information to digest, but we'll start that conversation going, knowing that we're going to offer some additional building level, smaller parent forums and staff forums to hopefully get some more input and more thought process about where we go from here in the future. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen at the moment, screen at the moment. And I think Keith, you had said that there were a couple of questions, clarifying questions in the chat right now that you'd like to share with us?
Yes, this is for Dr. Slaney. If you could describe the classroom layout and how the students in the singular, single class would be, you know, a single class of 20, how they would be laid out, for example?
Absolutely. So if you could imagine Placentino, and Adams would look a little bit different, but Mr. Jordan can help me with that as well. But if you can imagine Placentino, we have really large classrooms. So at the six feet, we're able to fit up to 12 students. We're still trying to figure out, as all my teachers keep texting me, please, 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 how we can figure out some type of reading table where they're six feet away or something with plexiglass. We're thinking it through, we keep going through there. So we're looking at, how can we fit, we can fit up to 24 students in two rooms and they're, in most cases, adjoining rooms. So we would have one adult in one room and one adult in the other. And really, this is where I really depend on our educators of how this would look. The beauty of the elementary model is in mini lessons. And often, we teach half our class and half our class. That's how we run it. We might, so a teacher might run a mini lesson, you know, have a mini lesson that's high to 10 minutes long and then release the students. And then he or she might not go to the next room and do it again. Or what we might do is we might actually pipe that lesson so the students are kind of used to doing it electronically into the other room. The piece that we're really need to, is really important for us to do is to start building our youngest learner's skills if we have to go remote. So we'll be utilizing, we're going to be one-to-one. So we'll be utilizing, we're going to be one-to-one in terms of technology, a Chromebook for every student K to twelve. And we'll be utilizing that in this model to be able to teach routines and skills and communication methods so that if and when we had to move to a remote learning, it would be seamless.
I think, and just to speak to the middle school as far as that space, additionally, we can fit the twelve students per class. And then we have adjoining or side-by-side or across the hallway classes that they can utilize. We may have to, we, Jamie and I have already, Dr. Slaney and I have already talked about kind of exchanges and desks. We may have to borrow some little ones for us.
And the other thing that our teachers really, really, and we felt the same way, is our youngest learners. I'm sorry, I can't put three-year-olds in desks, and I'm having a hard time putting kindergarteners in desks. So we're looking at being very creative, using yoga mats. We've been, we've been coordinating with principals from all over the state and looking at preschools that have already opened. We were visiting HCC to how they're doing it, we're learning from each other. So looking at how we contain still that six-foot radius for every child, but be a little bit more developmentally appropriate for them as well.
Keith, I think there was another clarifying question?
Yep, and I have, I have another one. This is from Mr. Keim. What does an asynchronous unified arts class look like?
So it would be a, it could be a music lesson, it could be an art lesson, it could be a physical education lesson. And it would be taped so that the students would be able to play it at home. And they would, they would get online and they would, the students would follow along with the lesson on their Chromebook that they would have at home. It could be broken into different segments, so you don't have to have a fifty-minute contiguous. It could be, you know, ten minutes and the students are doing something. It could be another ten minutes, the students are practicing something else. So broken up in a lesson like that.
Just to add on to that, Mr. Keim, what we talked about is that we can also send things home with our kids to be able to help with those lessons for materials-wise. And then a little different for at least our pre-K or our full-day K to the grade three. And for the kids who are in, actually, all of our students, we then give them a preview of like, this afternoon in art, this afternoon in PE. So then it will increase, increase their engagement and excitement about it as well. But we're going to be really leaning on our Unified Arts teachers to be able to help design that best experience. As they're the experts in that.
Yeah, and as, as Mr. Keim had indicated, you know, our Unified Arts, which is going to be run very similar at the, at the middle school as well. These are our teachers that serve all of our students. And we knew going in this is having to look at a model that is, in an asynchronous environment, is not ideal, we acknowledge that. But these are our educators that see every single one of our students. And if we're trying to kind of create a safe, a truly safe environment that minimalizes, minimizes those, those number of interactions, this is, this is where, this is where we are. We are hoping to kind of associate our students with kind of these mini modules of in-person and asynchronous work so we can definitely still deliver these unique and powerful opportunities here in Houston.
Yeah, and I think one of the benefits of our Unified Arts teachers, they're some of the most animated, energetic folks we have. So you could imagine a Brandon Quast delivering a mini lesson on a workout of the day where he's working it through with his child perhaps by his side. And, you know, and pumping that into kids and having them do it and asking the kids to perhaps have a sibling videotape that so that they could see how it's done and provide feedback. So that might be like one example. But you could also see our art teachers, our music teachers doing something similar to try to bring that to life, but also provide the scaffolding so kids could access that on their own or with their siblings at home.
I know there was a question from someone about the commissioner's meeting that happened today. And we did get some details, but the one question I think that is pertinent to what I was asked tonight in the chat is that the commissioner did share with us that from the preliminary results, we had to submit on July thirty-first our preliminary proposal to DESI, knowing it's still subject to change until we get to this first draft to discuss further and even further into the summer and into the fall. But he did share with us, I don't recall the percentage, but he did share with us that the majority of districts had started moving towards a hybrid model for the fall. Peter, do you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I've surveyed thirty-five districts in the region, this direct region, and I can share that spreadsheet with that school committee.
Yes, but overall for the state, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And all but, all but, of thirty-five districts, all but three, there are three that are looking to full remote to begin. And then the three who are trying to do some kind of partial hybrid like us. One of them with a K through one, one of them with a K through two, and then one that's aiming for a K through five. So of thirty-five in the area, that's, that's what their current thinking is, though it does shift day to day.
Yes, and again, just at the state level overall, I'll try to get that percentage for you before tomorrow. But he did say the large majority were looking at a hybrid model, again, at this snapshot in time. And people are still in the midst of putting together proposals. Was there any other clarifying question, Keith? You have to unmute yourself.
Wrong direction, wrong direction. There's one for Kelly. They'd like to get a little more clarification on the criteria for more face time for a special needs shop. Just to dig a little deeper into that.
So this is something we continue to kind of work on. And we are gathering data in regards to how students did remotely in the spring that will impact some of our decisions. Also taking a look at what are the numbers relative to the continuum students and how the impact of remote learning is for them, which for many of them, it's, it's, it's very challenging. But we're also gathering information on just individual students' challenges that they had through that remote piece. And if it was something that was related to, they had the ability, but they didn't have perhaps the executive function skills to support that ability because we took away the structure of school that really allowed them to do, you know, to be able to demonstrate their, their learning and demonstrate their ability in a more effective way. If it was something related to that, then we want to tweak our own practice and how we are supporting students and how we are putting in some services in place that will help them to be able to build those skills that they can demonstrate their, their ability even if they're in a remote setting. I think it's going to be really helpful that we're not going to be fully remote as we were in the spring and that the students are going to be in the school and receiving some in-person services where we can really work with them to design templates to help support them, to design, you know, a variety of things to our paraprofessionals and other service providers that will help to lift their skills when they're in that remote setting. And then when they're back in synchronous, then a lot of the students we can speak with directly in the high school and the middle school setting especially, to say what's working for you and what's not working for you. And let's tweak the pieces that you feel like you really need more help and support with. So I'm really hoping in the long run that having this hybrid model and having students have to be a little more independent during that remote setting, that we can really focus in on some executive function skills and get those skills in place and build them more than perhaps when they are fully in person and they have a paraprofessional or a, a special educator who are there to support them very quickly. I'm really hoping that we can really build these skills. So in case, I know someone had mentioned, in case we go fully remote, I'm hoping that some of the things that we are building through this hybrid model are going to help if we have to go that route.
And I know there's still an ongoing question lingering about the high school proposal of phasing in the hybrid model for high school students. So I do think there's more time to have conversations about this. And I have heard from a number of districts that are thinking of a phased-in model and not just for high school, but potentially for all hybrid models or any potential blend of remote. So I think it is something to think about and consider, whether it could be a week long versus two weeks. I think that's a possibility as well to try to minimize some of those concerns. But I do understand the valid points as to why to consider some of that and phasing in our high school students so they get a better understanding of how to remotely work in a hybrid model. And probably at this time, I know Nicole's already answered that, unless you have something to add, we could pause that thinking and try to come up with some more information on that before we meet again.
I'll also mention just, you know, part of the reason, not necessarily for the high school, but phasing in at any point in the district, it's, we, we were involved with forums with international educators several times throughout the summer. And one of the strong recommendations of successful nations that kind of brought kids back in the midst of the pandemic was this kind of phased-in approach. Now exactly what that looks like, I think, yeah, there's, as Dr. Cuska mentioned, there's lots of room for discussion, but it's, it's part of our proposal with safety in mind. We thought some, some level of phase in was really essential.
Something that we didn't discuss tonight that we'll have to develop the concept further is, what do the first two weeks, when teachers are getting additional training around safety and PD to help them with this model, what does that look like? We have to vet that out because we want to make sure that's a meaningful time for our staff, for everyone. But also, there are some considerations that we might be able to offer some orientation for students to start to give them some onboarding to different things like wearing masks, particularly with our younger students, and the social distancing, the physical distancing. So we have some ideas around that as well that we're hoping to incorporate when teachers are not actively teaching students yet. But are there some things that administrators can offer to our students to do some potential orientations, potentially bringing kids into the buildings and cohorts as well? So that's something we're talking about, but we haven't had the time to delve into that further. But I wanted just to mention that as well.
So Susan, I'd like to just take a minute, first of all, on behalf of the committee, to thank everybody for all of your efforts. Your presentation tonight was phenomenal. And I'm getting some texts from people that they're, they're impressed. So kudos to you all and thank you for that. The school committee members, I know you all have burning questions, I can see it in your faces. What I want you to do is take a minute and I want you to consider asking the higher-level, bigger overarching questions and not specific details about the plan. Those detailed questions I know have not been worked out. I want you to put those in the question document. I also don't want to keep the administrators here all night long. Everyone will get an opportunity to ask a question. But I want you to take a minute and think about more of the higher-level overarching thematic questions versus a specific detailed question about the plan. And Keith, were there any other clarifying questions that you have on your chat that, no, you're good? Okay, all right. So school committee, you're not on my screen, of course, so I'm going to go with who's on the front page. Cynthia, do you have any, do you have a question?
I have a lot, mine are, I think, too specific than what you were asking, but. All right, I'll start with one. At the middle school, I'm wondering if all of those cohorts are going to be considered like small group or are they going to be a larger group, as in two teachers versus four teachers, like the way they have small team versus large team? Or are they all going to be small teams and having teachers that are teaching, you know, social studies and English and math and science the way like, say, Team Three had been doing this past year in seventh grade? And I'm not sure if it's in that larger document because I haven't read it yet, all of it, because I haven't gotten through it all.
Yes, David, could you try to briefly talk about how that might look if there's still a lot to work out?
Yeah, so the way it would be right now is that it would be kind of your four core teachers with a cohort. You would have about forty students to that cohort, but in then, in your transition group, you would have eleven. Where we would need to be at this point, where it's drafted, is that those four teachers would be rotating, the four core teachers would be rotating through that, each of those classes of eleven. We definitely, kind of some, some conversations with teachers could look at, especially since the state of Massachusetts has released kind of how licensing works, is we could create even smaller or less teachers rotating through in order to kind of limit cross-contamination that staff members might provide coming into that cohort of eleven.
Thank you.
Dawn?
Thank you. So I'm trying to understand at the high school and middle school level, for the twenty percent that opts into the remote program or for the kids that are home three days a week, so both of those are working remotely. So for those students at the high school and the middle school, are they able to livestream into the class such that the teacher for cohort A, who teaches a lesson on Monday, is not then repeating the lesson, that everyone's moving ahead in the curriculum? What are we, I guess, can you answer that? Are they livestreaming on the days that they're working remotely? Whether they are the twenty percent that are designated remote or whether they are on their three days of remote learning that week? Thank you.
Nicole, you want me to go first or you? All right, so at the middle school level, we, at this point, all, all students would be, if they're in remote, whether they're fully remote or whether they're in their hybrid half of their cohort in that remote environment, they would be signing in live into the classroom. The, the nuanced difference is it wouldn't be one single teacher trying to watch twelve students that are in the classroom and twelve students that are out and trying to manage it. That's why we associated two educators per eleven live. So over the course of like two, if you have twelve students that are out and twelve students that are in, you still have two teachers associated with that group of twenty-two to twenty-four students. Does that, does that answer the question?
Yes, as to the middle school, so same question as to the high school.
So what I would say for the high school, and I want to be brief because I know there are a lot of different pieces to this. So what I would say for the high school is that we will have a lot of further conversations with teachers and with students about the best practices for when students are in remote learning and for when students are in, are in person. And a lot of that also will be worked out and discussed through collective bargaining with the union and moving forward in terms of the best practices as we can support everyone. What I do want to say is that I think across the board, no matter what the final plan ends up looking like, our students, whether they're in remote learning or in person, will be moving forward. So whether or not we're looking at one-week or two-week units that are more project-based learning-type units, and some of the teachers have been talking about this, where you really prioritize the time that you're in person to do certain pieces of the instruction and then are able to dive deep into the concepts and the skill development in remote learning as well and pair those two together. Or whether that's a situation where the students who are in remote learning will zoom in or use Google Meet to come in live into the class. But if you think about, and I want to caution us to really open our minds to, to allowing for a lot of creative solutions and a lot of creative responses to that. I think it's easy to jump to the idea of students being physically present in the classroom and then the other part of the cohort is zooming in and sort of sitting there watching from home. I think there are different models for that. So for example, you could have the students who are in remote learning come in live to the first ten minutes of that class. And you could have that ten-minute segment really designed so that you're bringing students in to ask questions, to delve into some of the concepts that students are grappling with as they move forward. And I know that's a vague answer, I fully understand that. The, one of the main reasons why that's a sort of vague answer is because there are so many different ways to approach it. We have amazing, creative, talented educators within the building who are already coming up with a lot of, of really interesting and innovative ways for students to zoom in to, to those classes, but to do it in ways that leverage the instructional practices you would use in remote learning, as well as leverage the instructional practices you would use in person. But a big piece of this is going to be the communication that we have in conversations that the district has with the union to really move forward and look at how everyone can, can work together on a plan.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. I really think it's, this is where I think even more important than the draft proposal that we end up putting into DESI on August ten, much more critical than that is the teacher voice, the parent voice, all of the things that we need to fine-tune to have some self, some reflection, some real thought-provoking discussions within smaller forums is going to be really critical because how we implement a plan is really going to be in the, because we know that our teachers are the experts in their classrooms, just like myself as a teacher for fifteen years. Based on where we are right now and having done remote learning in the past, I'm very confident that the teachers are going to come up with really- confident that the teachers are going to come up with really great ideas and rich conversations around that. And I see that Ian Louise had a question as well.
Thank you so much. And I apologize, can you hear me first of all?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you for all the work that you've done in this. I have a couple of overarching questions that I'm down with you've thought about. And I know the answers are more than two seconds, so you don't need to answer them tonight per se, but I wanted to share the question so that you can put some thought into how you want to address it by, by Wednesday. The first is understanding time on learning and how you're going to be able to pull pace in the curriculum through a hybrid model, whether it's, you know, grade four or eight or whatever. Because I, you know, undoubtedly, things are going to move a little bit slower. And so the question is, do we, you know, strip out content? Do we focus on just certain skills? Are we, you know, what are we prioritizing? And again, that's going to differ, I know, by grade, by classroom, et cetera. But I think it's going to be really important, especially for parents, to understand how some of those adjustments are going to be made. And, and I, and my guess is teachers haven't had an opportunity to even think through this yet. So, but as we move forward, I think that's an important topic to address. With respect to the creative solutions and how, you know, I, I think it is easy to jump to this idea that, you know, students at home are zooming in and, and like making believe they're part of the classroom. I, I know that's not necessarily how this will evolve. Having said that, even to enable that, you've got to sort through not only a staffing model, but potential technology solutions, materials solutions, you know, I don't know, it's curriculum kits that are at home to support the same experience at home, what have you. It is essential that we understand what it's going to take to operationalize this sooner rather than later. I'm sure you have some rough ideas on that with respect to FTEs and technology, but I am concerned about getting our arms wrapped around that. And importantly, what that will look like past December 31st, because the federal funding takes us to December 31st. So I want to make sure we understand that after that date.
And Louise, one question per committee member. Hold on.
Okay.
I want the others to get a chance to.
I'd like them to get a chance to. Those are just, but they're big overarching things that we need to understand.
Oh, wow.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Stace, like this, this is, I, I, this is too important. Okay? So the last thing, you can answer it now or Wednesday, but it's not something you're going to be able to answer quickly. It seems like the model, especially at the middle school, is predicated on the assumption that a certain percent of families would choose to keep their kids home. If that breaks down, what do we do? And so there's no answers for that now, or maybe there is.
Yeah, we, so we built in contingencies where we had, we're built so that we can still be at max capacity if we need to be.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
And I, I do.
Catherine? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Susan. No, go ahead.
That's fine. I was going to, I was going to say the same thing, Catherine.
My, my sort of overarching question or themed questions, because I also have a million and a half, is actually, it's about the remote learning in the, with the younger kids, whether they are home by choice or if, you know, they have, they've been exposed and now they're, you know, they're quarantining for a while. Can we, is there ways to record the live sessions so that parents who are working, if, if those are the kids who can't really access the curriculum by themselves with the technology, can parents work with them at night when they get home from work? Or if they're homeworking, you know, when they get, are through with work? How can we make it a more portable entity so that parents who are working and have to coach the kids through these experiences so that it's, it's more user friendly for them?
Yes, and I do think that we're going to have to have some more conversations around that. I did have some parents email me saying because of their work situations or childcare situations that they would want to be able to do it later in the day.
Right.
I do think the whole point of this is to have more synchronous and asynchronous learning that would take place in a similar timeframe. And that is the reason for trying to do a blended hybrid and a full in-person model. So that will come with challenges because if, if the goal is to get our children to be in the class, whether virtually or in person with the teacher as much as possible, how that would look after hours, definitely comes with more challenges. But there also is a potential that some students, if they truly cannot do that model either way, some districts are doing for their remote portion, the complete LMS online platform that students would be doing remote lessons that wouldn't necessarily be in with the teacher. So there may be some possibilities that some students would be able to get virtual classes that are not from the teachers in school because they have limitations to that schedule. But I definitely think we need to talk about that a little bit more. So Peter, I'll, I'll help him address that when we start talking about remote learning again, not tonight, but.
And Catherine, the way we designed it was thinking about, like when, when Mr. Khan and I talked about it, I imagined myself all March to June with my second grader, right? Every second prompting her along. I lived it, I got it. I get emails and I'm like, I get it. So what we want to do is shift it, right? That's why we're not just provide, we're providing a remote teacher, right? So there's going to be these learning blocks where they're on. And I know we're worried about screens, but they're not going to be looking at the screens the whole time. So there's going to be a mini lesson and then the children are going to do their work. But the teacher is going to be there to be able to help move kids into a little room so that they can do a conference or a reading group while kids are working independently. So it's how we're imagining this model of trying to remove, I know it's not, it's, it's going to be impossible to do it completely, but how do we do it for our youngest learners so that, you know, families can still work from home so they're not having to sit next to their child the whole time? And we've been really thinking about that model, shifting from crisis learning and crisis teaching to this, which is going to be highly supported by the educator.
Right.
I agree. I think some of our parents, when they were asking these questions, that is exactly what they were thinking of, based on what they had in the spring, based on that unplanned timeframe that we had no idea we were all going into and for the rest of the year. That was scary to them. But I do believe a childcare provider having that same model that if they're supporting children, but the kids are able to get more of their instruction remotely from the teachers themselves, that will change the level of need from the students, from the parents as well.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Andy?
Thank you for all the hard work you've done. This was a really comprehensive plan and I didn't get through all 50 pages with the level of detail that I wanted to, but I certainly looked as much of it as I could. Question I have is probably more clarifying, and I just want to make sure I understand correctly, that the schedules that we've put out for pre-K3, our four or five kids, our middle school and our high school, those are all schedules that are going to be scalable if we go fully remote, if we go to a hybrid, if we go back in person like full on. And that's going to be our schedule from September to June. Is that correct? Okay. Perfect. That's easy. Thank you.
Lisa did have a question, but she sent me a text and said she had to jump off.
Oh, no, I'm back again.
Oh, you're back. All right, Catherine.
Thank you. I'm going to limit myself to one, but I am wondering for the parents of special education kids that are watching, is there a target date for when they might find out if their child is going to have a different schedule? I guess this wouldn't apply to the pre-K to two level, but for kids in upper elementary, middle school and high school, children who have more significant special needs, how, when will they find out if they're going to have more in-person time or a different schedule than a typical peer at the same grade level? And I, and I asked that question knowing that it's subject to change from day to day.
Yes, and definitely, certainly, as, as from the proposal we put forth tonight, as again, as our draft, the K3 model is trying to provide as much for all K3 students, regardless of special needs, regardless of EL504 needs, would be in person as much as possible barring the remote learning needs of some students. That being said, I would, even though we're looking at a high needs population for making those decisions, I really would say that given my background in special ed, given our conversations that we've had, that will be a very small percentage of people, our students that we would say in grades four to 12 would automatically be eligible for full in-person learning because it would be really specific to students that are already getting significant amount of time on learning from special educators, from support staff on their grid right now. And those will be the, so again, that percentage will be very small and I don't know the exact date of when we would have that information, but we're certainly trying to put that data together as soon as possible.
Is there a time, is there a time limit for when a family needs to commit to hybrid or 100% remote?
We will need to establish that timeline very soon. And I think that one of the things we need to do is determine our next steps for this proposal is if this is the proposal that we're going to move forward, then that would be part of our next steps for the team to determine when do we need that information by? And also knowing that that could be subject to change because we don't want to lock parents into one possibility as things start to ebb and flow, whether more restrictive or less restrictive and parents have concerns whether to move their kids from remote to more in-person. We wouldn't want to lock them out for the whole year as well, but potentially by term that, whatever that term is in different grade levels, but we'd have, have to have enough time to plan a reentry for students at our remote going back in person. So I, I can't give you the answer definitively for when we would need that. But once we determine with the committee what proposal we're putting forth to DESI on the 10th, then we can start to plan out what that timeline, when we need that information by.
So we all have some homework to do. So the committee and the parent community and the teachers, we need to read through that document. Dr. Cuska, is it already on the district website or will it be on there tomorrow?
I believe Dan put it up tonight for me before the meeting.
Yes, it's under the fall reopening tab. It's the first page under that tab.
And Dan, if by tomorrow, you know, by one in the morning or something, I'm kidding, but tomorrow morning at some point after school would be normal hours, business hours, if you could have this presentation up there as well and make sure that that link is working. I don't know why it wouldn't allow me to present this speaking card, but then parents might be able to, and school community might be able to go into that video as well, which impacts some of our decisions. Will that work for you?
Does that work for you, Dan?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And this is a question, Susan, do you, can you give me a timeframe? I think it's really important that we put an FAQ up on that tab as well. And I know, like I, like I said, I know we're not going to get to everyone's questions, but it would be helpful to have an FAQ. Can you give me a timeframe for when we think we could have one up? It's not for lack of information that we don't, that we don't, we couldn't put it up.
We had started to think about some FAQs ourselves. I know that we put on the website, the FAQs from the Commissioner of Education, and that is on our resources under the fall reopening tab. But yes, we have started to think about some of those questions and as the next few days go on, I would hope that maybe, I don't want to promise, overpromise, but maybe by Friday, we could potentially get some FAQs together and add to that as we go, knowing that it could be a fluid document. So we'll try to start incorporating that as we have questions the next few days.
Great. No, I appreciate that and I don't want you to overcommit. That's why I just wanted to ask what you thought was reasonable. So school committee members and community members, we need to get on the website, read that document. Dr. Cuska, I think your email link has already gone out by the magic of Mr. McLeod. So I think people can already submit their questions, but if people have additional questions, please email one of the school committee members and we will put that on our portal of questions. And we will either answer it at our Q and A session coming up tomorrow and Wednesday or we will have it on our FAQ. And I just want to reiterate again, tomorrow, the staff will have an opportunity to have a Q and A session with Dr. Cuska. The school committee has posted it as a meeting because most of us will most likely be sitting in on that meeting. And that will be broadcast again via Hcat. And then on Wednesday at 5:00 PM, we will have our session with the parents where your questions will already be preloaded to us. So it won't be a live back and forth conversation with parents, but we will be asking the questions and getting answers to your questions. On Thursday, the school committee will have our regular session where we will discuss all of the feedback that we've received. We will ask more of our detailed questions and we will determine if we're ready to make a vote on the proposal or if we need to bump it to Monday, August 10th. So school committee people, none of you are on my screen, anybody have a question about process? Oh, go ahead.
And I mentioned one thing that I forgot to mention. We do have on the agenda for Thursday as well, we, knowing that we have to move the calendar those 10 additional days, we will be bringing you a proposal on the calendar on Thursday as well, hopefully to vote on. And there might be some changes to, not just the beginning, there are a couple of other things, thinking of this potential hybrid model and the, and the dates and the Wednesdays and things. So that might be part of that. And also a health and safety monitor job description that we have developed and want to try to utilize, to try to fill in some of these pieces for safety for our students for traveling and bathrooms and lunch and things like that.
Great. Thank you for that. That was important. So school committee, does anybody else have any process questions about the coming week? All right. With that, it is 9:08. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Andy. Roll call vote, sorry, the screen's changing. Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton, you're somewhere?
Yes.
And Mrs. Raffey, yes. It is 9:09. Oh, Cynthia, I'm sorry, Mrs. Chovneck.
Thanks, yes.
Okay, it is 9:09. This meeting is now ended. Thank you administrators for your time. Have a lovely evening. Thank you, Dr. Cuska, Dr. Bertello. Good night.
Thank you.